All right, everybody. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this evening, November 14th, Reinbeck Town Board Meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Okay, everybody's feeling better? Couple of bad viruses going around, so... I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the prior minutes of October 24th, 2016, our regular Town Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Let me... For October 24th, I think that was one that I wasn't at. So I would say...
Okay, so one abstention and four ayes. Motion passes. Thank you. I'll make a motion for the approval of our prior minutes for October 26th. It was a special Town Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. And then lastly, I'll make a motion for the approval of our special Town Board meeting minutes from November 1st. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Have an announcement, and then if anybody else does that, it'd be great. Town Hall will be closed at noon, the day before Thanksgiving, which is Wednesday, the 23rd of November. It will be closed all day on Thanksgiving, which is Thursday, the 24th, and it will be closed the day after, the 25th. So get your business in early on the 23rd or the Monday after Thanksgiving. Anybody else have any?
Yeah. You had sent us a letter from the county announcing that they're giving us a grant to purchase a truck for the building department. And you certainly haven't gotten the paperwork yet.
No.
But it indicates it's a $25,000 grant to be applied for.
Which is your good work. Thank you.
And we did not get...
We did not get the kiddie pool. We did not get Astor Road, paving of Astor Drive. But there... The state also, I don't know if I forwarded to you guys, they have $20 million in grants coming out for consolidation studies and stuff. That's something we should muster up some hoo-ha and try and apply for something.
Yeah, I wasn't clear whether it's one grant for $20 million or they're dividing.
Dividing. Send it out again. If you could get a $20 million consolidation grant for Reinbeck, we'd have a hard time spending it.
Maybe they're thinking of bigger fish than us, but I was confused when I read it.
Anything else, Joe?
No.
Anybody else? We have a continuation of our public hearing on our 2017 budget. Does anybody wish to speak about the budget?
Well, we haven't gotten anything. There was discussion at the last...
This is a public hearing for comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I think we close it now, and we can still amend our budget. I think we need to schedule a budget session, and we need to adopt it before the 20th.
By the 20th.
Yeah, sorry?
By the 20th.
By the 20th. So, hearing, no comments from anyone in the public. I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing. May I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, so that's closed. Do you guys want to schedule a budget public meeting now? You know, another meeting now? I...
Yeah.
I still am looking for one more conversation with someone from the controller. It came to our attention that all of the costs in the highway general associated with snow removal and brush and leaves are a general fund item, not a part town. It's about $230,000 worth of expenses that only the town has been paying for. It's a town and village expense. Just like we pay for county road maintenance and state road maintenance, village residents need to pay for town maintenance. If we moved all of that over in one whopping sum, the tax rate for the village residents would go through the roof, so we don't want to do that. I need to have one more discussion with the controller, state controller. Best practices says that, you know, big-ticket items should be shared on the broadest possible tax base. So we will be moving brush and leaves and snow removal. That's personal services and equipment, icing stuff, over to the general fund incrementally so as not to shock anybody with any raise. Having said that, our tax rate in Reinbeck is the lowest in the county. So even if we raised it, you know, a bunch of percentage points, it would only be a couple of cents. We are not going to do that. We're going to do it incrementally. I wanted to have one more conversation with the controller, and I'll have that information for you guys when we meet, and we can look at what we want to do. We have a couple more items to look at. I think the budget will be good to pass. And, you know... Anybody want to throw out some dates?
21st. That's the day we have to adopt.
No, the 20th we need to adopt.
Well, but that's a Sunday, the 20th, so you have till, I think, the Monday. What about tomorrow night?
I don't think that works. I mean, I've never seen that anywhere, that 20th falls on a Sunday.
I would think you would make it the Friday before.
I thought the Association of Towns told me, but any of it...
You can do it on the 20th, even though it's a Sunday?
Why not?
You don't have to do it last week.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time opening up my calendar, but do you want to do a day meeting, an evening meeting?
What about tomorrow?
I'll do a day meeting.
Can you do a day meeting?
Yeah, that's all I'm going to do, one more now anyway.
Yeah, I think so. Tomorrow or Wednesday?
I could do tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I'm out of pocket. I'm bound to school.
When will you be back?
Tomorrow night.
How about Wednesday or Thursday, Joe?
I can do Wednesday.
I can do Thursday. I can do both Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday, Thursday late afternoon.
Thursday? Joe's Thursday good for you?
What about Friday?
No.
I can do Thursday.
Thursday.
We've got a meeting at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I know. We've got the process.
Thursday, what's your...
It's a problem for me, but I guess I'll have to do it.
Okay.
So what is it, Thursday?
Well, let's do it in the evening. Maybe the press wants to be there.
I can't do an evening meeting. I have to do the day. Sorry.
So Thursday, the 17th.
And what time are we doing it?
Oh, here's my calendar just opened up. Okay.
Must be an iPhone.
Yeah, I have a dinner at Leo's School. I have to be done here by 4:30. You want to do 1:00?
1:00?
I can't do 1:00. I can do 2:00.
2:00?
We'll take 2:00.
You got it?
2:00 it is.
2:00 on Thursday, right?
Yeah, it's Thursday, the 17th.
And you'll be voting on the budget. Got it.
We'll be making final changes and hopefully voting on it. If not, we'll have to schedule a meeting for Friday, but I think... John, will you just tell Shelley that she needs to be here for that? I mean, you know, I'll text her.
And this will be a public meeting, so you ought to let Fred know.
All meetings are public.
Okay, no, but I mean, it orders me to last couple of budget meetings or not.
Okay, having said that, let's just go through what we have to do tonight. I'd like to... Any committee or liaison reports?
Did you get the email? I should probably send it to everybody in the committee to discuss it.
Sorry, I'm just letting Shelley know.
Did you get the information?
From Panda?
Yeah.
Yep. It's the first report we've had from them since I've been on the board.
No, I'm sorry. I don't mean to report. I haven't gotten a report from them. You got a report from them?
They sent a budget around.
I didn't get that.
Okay, I'll send it out. Just today.
Okay, because I was referring to the community, the Alliance for Community Media?
Yes.
Okay, good.
You copied.
I'll send that to everybody.
Yes.
Yeah. And you can forward me the Panda email?
I think it just came today. Anybody else?
Yeah, we recently appointed a committee to look at planning, building, and zoning processes in the town. Three people from the planning board, two members of the Town Board, Ed and I, and two, I'm going to say, to satisfy customers. It's probably the most diplomatic way to say it. So what we're doing is reviewing all the processes in the town for obtained building permits, variances from the zoning board, you know, zoning board appeals, actions, planning board actions, and the like. We've met a couple of times already. We've interviewed some of the employees in the town over what they consider the issues or problems and what their suggestions are. And we'll meet again on Wednesday, or Thursday, whichever...
Thursday.
Thursday. If anybody out is listening has any complaints or suggestions about those processes, it would be good to get them to us. You can send them to Town Hall or call the Town Clerk, and we will call you back, and I will... I'll make sure that you're...
Thanks, Alan.
So it has nothing to do with the legal process?
No.
You're saying it has to do with...
Well, you know, it's... Some of the issues have to do with people don't know what they're supposed to do. The requirements seem to change as they go through the process. Things take too long. We're trying to find out why they think things take too long. People do things, it takes three meetings of the planning board instead of one, that kind of stuff.
We're trying to look at the process for the building, planning, and zoning departments. Make it as user-friendly as possible. Take in all the information we've gleaned, whether we have to set different meetings for the planning board and zoning board, whether we need form... We want to... We don't want people held up in this process. We want to make it the end product very user-friendly.
One of the most prevalent complaints is people are told what they need to do to get what they need, you know, get their permit or get their variance. And then during the process, that changes. So we're going to get them on. So we're interviewing, we haven't interviewed the zoning enforcement officer and building inspector yet, but we'll get to him. And we've talked to a number of people that are often in the process. Now, my background, by the way, is process design, and that is I began because of assault. I don't know anything about the building, planning, and zoning process or nothing about it. And it's complicated, and I think it's more complicated than it seems.
Well, thank you guys for doing it.
And you're welcome. You could have made a lot of money doing this.
Not in Rein... Not for the town of Reinbeck.
Doesn't have to here.
Doing it for the glamour. The love.
I see you're very proud for doing stuff like this.
That's why we're lucky to have you. So thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Anybody else? I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-217, revised procurement policy and procedures. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Joe, did you get everything done with it that you needed? So we had previously tabled this, and we had a couple of questions. We moved it back to our current levels. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2016-245 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 59 checks totaling $79,258.27. May I have a second?
Second.
By way of discussion, I have a couple of changes. Page six for the American Legion. While we do have in our budget $500 to fund them, we found out that it's for an honorarium and maybe $60 for some sheet music. They've charged us for five concerts, one of which is in Clinton, and I don't feel like we can pay for a concert in Clinton. It's at the Clinton Alliance Church. So I motion that we amend this to $400. The other four were in Reinbeck. The Quitman House, Wells Manor, the Baptist Home, and something else. And there were three other concerts. Two were in Red Hook, and one was in Clinton. It's Reinbeck tax dollars, so...
How much is it going to be?
It's 400 instead of 500. Joe, did you have any changes?
Yeah, I think there are two small mistakes. One is 1216, voucher 1216, Chappelle. It should be $10 less.
What page is this?
It's $10 less.
523.
It's 523. He's charged the 533.
I'm sorry. Which one?
Page two, second to the bottom, Chappelle.
Yep. Oh, this was for an escrow refund.
Yeah, it should be 423. 523.
533.
Okay.
And then there's another one on page four from here. It should be $10 less. One of the items was entered as $64.96, but it's really $54.96.
Good eye, Joe.
So, John, you have these changes. Would you also make a note to just write to the Legion and let them know the reason why we're funding 400 is because the fifth concert was not in the town of Reinbeck?
So it's $120 less than the face of that world.
Any other discussion? We have a... All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks.
That's the least correction.
Yes, John's got them. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-245... Oh, I already did that. I'll make a motion for 2016-246, our capital projects abstracts, two checks totaling $192.50. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-247, our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? It's the end-of-year shuffle, folks. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
It sounds like a great title for someone.
Any opposed? So moved. All in favor?
It's the end-of-year shuffle.
End-of-the-air shuffle. Okay. Resolution 2016-248, full-time, non-union employee health insurance contribution adjustment. May I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. Thanks, Elaine. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. We've discussed this at Lawson in a couple of budget sessions, and I think I may be alone on this, but in my view, there is actually a disparity between union health benefits and non-union health benefits. We are about to, or have started, negotiations, and at least in my view, we should hold what we're charging non-union people to see where we come out with the union people and make an adjustment thereafter. I must say, I was rather astounded today when I asked Shelley what we pay for health insurance and for family insurance under what we're going to pay beginning December 1st. The premium is $19,000 plus on top of that, we pay $7,000. Now, assuming a person is a new employee for family, that brings it down to $23,635 for a family policy. For a one employee with children with a 12.5% discount, it brings it down to $16,923. For an employee and a spouse, no children, with the deductible of $7,000 that we're paying, it brings it down to $18,740. And for a single, paying at 12.5%, and the deductible is $3,500, which we do pay, brings it down to $9,337. These are huge expenditures, and the trend is in the private sector to have the employee pay more. We were told that in Dutchess County for employees, the standard seems to be around 15%. And we're at 12.5 for new employees. So I think, my own view, is that this, it should be a matter of discussion, and then we see where we end up.
Two things I'd like to point out. We are in negotiation with the union. What we're doing here is, four years ago when we negotiated a contract with the union, we rolled all of our Town Hall employees. We made them pay 12.5% contribution before my time, saying that this would be useful in a union negotiation, getting the union guys there. It didn't happen. People in Town Hall are still paying 12%. They've been paying 12% for four years now. They're asking for the same structure that our union employees have. Another thing I'd like to point out is while it is a heavy burden, our employees in this town are some of the lowest paid in this county. Our clerk is the lowest paid in this county, our business manager, and we staff this town with part-time, unbenefited workers. When someone who's been here for 20 years is making $16 an hour, the $17,000 we pay for health insurance is a pittance. And the town... These town residents, we are thrifty. We are not... No one is making away here on salary and benefits. So there are two parts to this equation. It's salary and it's health benefits. And if you want to keep salaries low, you got to pick up the benefits. If you want to bring salaries up, you have contributions on top of that for retiree benefits and FICA and co-pays. That's my feeling.
Without prolonging it, let me just say that at the last negotiation, people were paying, I believe, nothing... Well, people were paying... Longtime employees were paying nothing toward health insurance, and I think new employees were paying something. We did bring it up. We didn't bring it up to 12.5%, but there is a step rate which is reflected in this. So we did make some... Some little progress in that, but let's not prolong the discussion.
What we're doing here is restoring our five full-time, non-union Town Hall employees to the same structure that our union employees have had for the past four years. They've been paying more, and now we're giving them the same structure. If something happens with the union and we get bigger coverage, we can go back to the well, but not in my... I won't support it unless there's a salary parity study that shows that their total compensation is on par with what people in this county and area are making.
Along those lines, let me ask you, have we... I think we have all the information in now, right? Are we going to be discussing this when we have our budget meeting?
We certainly could. I don't know that we're ready to. We have... We can do this until January, when we publish our new salary, and we can certainly raise people in January. I would rather, you know, have a recommendation. Ed was working it on with me. He's sick. We could schedule something with Richardson and certainly bring it up. You know, we start people here... We used to start people here last year at $12 an hour, and we have huge turnover. We've gotten them up to $13 an hour, $13.40. We have longtime employees who run this town, who get no benefits, have families to take care of, and are making $13.40 an hour. That's something that we're committed to addressing. So that's where I am. That's what this does. Does anybody else have any other?
Let me just make clear that my proposal was that we would retroactively adjust after we see where we come out.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, see, I agree with you. I think we have to provide more income for our employees. And the thing about this is that it gives them income that is not taxable.
And it doesn't cost us benefit, yeah.
It doesn't cost us pension. It doesn't cost pension. So it's, in terms of bang for the buck, this is probably the most intelligent way to give people more money in their pockets.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Resolution 2016-249, Dutchess County Real Property Tax Office, re-levy on certain Vandenberg-Cove-Sewer District accounts on the 2017 county slash tax bills. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Right, second.
I have an amendment to this. The second amount for Holmes-Hunter is... Needs to be amended to 18... I'm sorry. 18...
$75.
It says 79 here.
Well, that's wrong.
Okay.
It's just $500 less.
Okay. So that's an amendment to this. For everybody, this is when you don't pay your special district charges, after a certain time, the town can no longer collect. It's turned over to the county for a re-levy and a lien placed against your property. That's what we're approving here. Is there any further discussion on the amended amount? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2016-250, hire to the zoning board of appeals, hedges. May I have a motion and a second? Thank you, Ed. Second, please? I would like to ask to table this and have a discussion in executive session. Can we table this until after an executive session discussion? I just have a question, and I don't want to discuss this person publicly. Is that all right? Also, the salary is at $13. Is that currently what we're paying now?
13.50.
Okay, then...
I mentioned it.
Okay, then we should look at amending that. But is that all right if we table this in executive session? So we're going to table this one. Thank you. Resolution 2016-251, reappointment to the Board of Assessment and Review. May I have a motion and a second? I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Linda Moverley has graciously accepted to re-up, and I think we're still one person short. So any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. So we are looking for one more member for the Board of Assessment Review. It's a really easy way to volunteer. Resolution 2016-252, I'll make a motion, refrigerator for the Town Hall basement. May I have a second? We approved this last year, and we approved a specific model at a specific price that was on sale, and by the time we approved it, it was no longer available nor was it on sale. So I figured we should just bring this back because the other one's choking along and there's smoke coming out of it.
Black line.
Yes, exactly. And leave it to the discretion of our excellent staff and a... and approve a cost not to exceed $500. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Is there any new business? Oh.
New business?
Barry, you're here.
The highway department.
Come on up. It's Barry Sherrod.
We would like, it's the highway department, to purchase this one. We need to get a truck to replace our aging R9 truck. You approved solicitation at the last meeting. We've got bids in. The master plan is to get a new truck to replace this one with plow and sander and to transfer in the form of sale to the cemetery of the old truck.
Sorry, this is the R, this is R9?
R9, yeah.
It's, is this Bob's truck?
No.
Okay.
Now, we're back to plan A.
Which truck is this?
This is the three-quarter ton work truck that we use for plowing.
Okay. Okay, it's like the second bay of the first one in. Okay, that's R9.
So, we have bids in. I can provide a copy of the bids if you'd all like to look them over and get it on the resolution for next meeting for approval. The low bidder was through the state bid system on a dotted bid, so they're substantially lower than anyone else.
And the R9 will be sufficient for the cemetery?
Yeah, that would be the truck for Gary. It's still, we've got some life in it, and he doesn't use it mileage-wise like we do on roads.
Kind of nice plow for him?
Yeah, plow was worth it, yeah.
Are you asking us to approve anything tonight?
I would like the approval to go ahead with the process to buy the truck. We have the money and the fund.
Low bid?
Yeah.
All right, so a resolution to approve the purchase of a new truck? Do you have a price for us, or?
Yeah, it's $44,500 and change. And that's complete, I'm grabbing the paper, that's complete with a sander and a plow.
Wow.
So, it's a pretty good price. $44,536 is the price.
So, you will give that, along with the bill information, to John. It'll be flushed out in our resolution. Proposal from the floor to approve the purchase of a new truck to... Replace, thank you. Replace was the word I was looking for. R9 with a plow and a sander, low bid off the state contract for $44,532, did you say?
Yeah, $44,536.
$44,000. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
May I have a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, just let me say, I do thank the highway department for making the switch to the R9. So, because there's a dire need at the cemetery for a truck with plows, so that's a great thing that you were switching. So, I do thank you for that.
I drive by the cemetery in the morning when I go to work, and I always look in there at Gary's truck. He doesn't like the truck.
It's not in good shape. The $44,000, though, you have that in the budget as part of 2016, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Congratulations on your work for the new truck.
How big is it?
It's going to be basically the same truck as we have. It's actually going to be a one-time, not three-year. But it's going to be set up the same.
That is a good price for a truck.
It really is.
Any other new business? Anybody from the board?
Would you want to do rectory, please?
If you would like to?
Yes, I would. I gave you a resolution to be have. Did you ever print it out? I sent it, sent an email.
You sent it by email?
Yeah, well.
You have a, I have it on my phone. You want to read it?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Hold on. Sorry, Mr. Garita will get with you after the board finishes.
Pardon? I left my phone in the car, so I didn't want to put it in here. I'd always have this.
I can't find it.
Well, I sent an email.
It was on Friday.
And it says, basically, the wherestes are that the recomitting interview, there were five people that applied for the job, recomitting interviewed for them. One of them showed, the committee recommended two people, Elaine Fernandez and another person. Because, in my opinion, Elaine is more qualified for what we want because of the fact she's been a lifelong resident of the town. She knows the people here. She goes, she's done events and interfaced with the public and created projects, et cetera, et cetera. We all know what Elaine is. So, my recommendation is that we appoint Elaine as the recreation director effective the first of the year. So, the resolve is that Elaine Fernandez be appointed the lineback recreation director effective January 1st, 2017. I think I hit the high spots.
If we do that, how does that work out?
Well, Elaine would resign from the board effective January 1st. Yes. And then that position is up for reelection at the end of 2017.
End of 2017.
Yeah, so the appointment would only, the appointment is always till the next election. Turns out whoever runs in that election would be then elected for a four-year term. You interested?
No, thank you. Hopefully, that will bring stability.
Yes, and continuity. Because Elaine has been on, has been liaison to the recreation committee. She's the one that did the Lion Cliff Waterfront Day project. She took it on and did it herself. So, anyway, I'm sure she will stay in for us.
Yeah, I have to. But Elizabeth asked if I wanted to say anything to the public about it. I was sitting out there because I have to recuse myself. Obviously, I can't vote on this. It's a conflict of interest. But I do want to say that I did give it a lot of thought when the rec position came open. It's a position that's come open several times now since I've been on the board. It's a hard one to keep people in. It's something I feel well-suited for. I think everybody in the town who knows me, including my fellow board members, knows that I really didn't have any intention of running again when my term expires next year. I've been in public service for more than 10 years between the state and local governments. And I've had a dream since I was a child to really write and produce films and plays. And it's something I feel really strongly about. And I love organizing events as a producer. I've had a lot of great successes over the last couple of years. I think there'd be such a natural fit for me to be a really good recreation director. And it's another way of continuing my service, in a sense. I mean, I grew up here. I know a lot of people. I want the best for the town. I think our demographics are changing. I'm aware of that. I think I could come in and really benefit the recreation committee and the town. So, I do have some sadness. I feel like I've learned a lot in the three years that I've been on the board. I don't regret a minute of it. I have a lot of respect for my colleagues on the board, every one of you. And I'll miss everybody. But I would be close by and...
You have the park.
You know, yeah. So, it came with a lot of thought. It wasn't something I just, you know, sort of woke up one morning and jumped into. It was something I really felt like was a good transition for me for where I'm at in my life. And I thought it would be good for the town, so.
Thank you. I mean, I think Sally hit it on the head. It'll bring stability and the potential for growth and management in our programs. You know, we know what you're capable of. You know, it's just, and we need it. You know, recreation is something that I think our residents here see an immediate sort of benefit from their tax dollars from it. And, you know, we have a new park, and we have an aging population. And, you know, it's an important service we provide, so. We've all, I think, thought about it.
So, I move that we name Elaine Fernandez as the recreation director.
Has that been seconded? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. So moved. Thank you, Elaine. Yes, there will be camp.
So, I'll have to do a sub as the Easter party.
Did you?
I'm having that rectory, right, right.
Oh, boy. Okay. Another new business item? We have Mr. Ike Garita here.
I want to apologize because I have a paralyzed...
Paralyzed vocal cord. Can you hear him? Steve, good.
I want to disrupt residents. And my grand pet brief is the zoning between the village and the town. I'm being, I have already, there was a leak in my service line underneath the road.
This is your water service? You're on the village water, and you're a town resident. You live on Hiley Road.
Right.
Okay.
I am the leak in that, and they forced me to replace it. They're also charged. So, I already paid $4,500, which was money that I was going to pay my town taxes. So, I have already paid Matthew's service to replace the pipe. In addition to that, Mr. Vanden has chosen to charge me an additional $1,500.
Dollars, $1,500?
For his part, which he didn't have.
What, I don't understand. $4,500 in work, and the village is charging you an additional $1,500 for?
For his part of the work. Basically, Matthew's service, you know. They didn't have, the village doesn't have a backup deep enough to go to nine and a half feet, which is what it was. It was supposed to be four feet. I couldn't get, so my contract had to take the... And charge you $400.
There was under the road?
There was a cut made in a road?
No.
Okay.
They wanted...
They just pulled the old pipe through. I know that that's going to happen again because they need to fix the road. There's either, they, there are two punctures that are on my supply. So, I'm not going to try to break the road. They drilled a hole into the road.
Who drilled a hole in the road?
Village.
On a town road?
On a town road. Hi, Barry.
Barry, did you know about that?
No, the hole, the excavation that I saw for the water department pipe was off to the side, on the west side of Hiley Road, opposite Mr. Ed Chirio's property. The pipe ran perpendicular from that point under the road to his curb道. I didn't see any disruption in the road. There was no permit ever applied for, by Matthews to do that dig because the town had already applied for a permit through the town because it is a town road.
The village had applied.
There's a village, a water permit, to dig up, to dig up the road if need be. But it was my understanding that there was never any road surface disturbed in that whole thing.
There's two trucks in the road. Coincidentally, there are two punctures in the pipe.
Was that to find the pipe initially?
I think they drilled it to find the leak.
Right.
Barry, you'll check and see if our roads were disturbed. We have a law that's very specific about this. People have to apply to the highway. There's a permit fee. And if they do this without a permit, there is a fine and a prison term attached to it.
The reason why Barry was given out of the dedication is that he didn't point a job at. He had not gotten permission and I have the form better. That said, he is allowed to go to that. In addition, Barry, if you go back in, you'll see that the right side where they dug the main pipe, the start of the pipes. And they're tall. You can see, they're all over the road. They violated the ocean because they dug a nine and a half feet deep, 40 by 20. And they did not have any bracing or scaffolding. And there are people who are actually were working, Matthews was working, and it was collapsing on all Matthews' truck. And we had to make sure that he was at the right length. There was no person in the water while they were doing the dig on the Friday and the repair on the Saturday. What gets me is that the mayor and Gary, his dad, came on Saturday.
I'm sorry, what gets you is that the mayor and?
Gary.
Another?
Gary Breslin.
And his wife came to see what was happening in the road and told my contractor not to turn off my water. I told them, right? I called the department down to work. They complained about it. And all of a sudden, they had to turn it back on.
You know, this is, you're a town resident, but you're on a service. It's a private, it's a, you're on a water district, and the village owns that water district. There are rules. We're also water district customers in the town, at the highway garage here and in our park. We have issues with the village and the water department, too. I don't know, I can't, we can't advise you on legality of this. We can only say, what we can look at are certainly road cuts made in our town. There is no, you said you had problems with the town and the village zoning. This is, there's no overlap here. You're a town resident. You're, you have to follow town zoning laws. However, as a subscriber to the water, as a water user, there's a whole set of laws in place for that. And I would encourage you to look at those laws. And if you need to, get an attorney. We can't police the village. We can't.
I've tried to get. I've gone through John Van Man, and Marvin, come to Steve, Natalie, come, come as far down.
And what are they saying to you?
They don't want to take it. And I'm prepared, I could sue the village for both, for both things. But I'm also going to sue together the town, the founder, to dig out, dig out the water tank. There's no, there's no permit, no site plan. There's no, there's no permit, no site plan. It was, the only thing I went through on Monday night was this.
Are you saying you're suing us because there's a water tank on Hiley Road?
Yes.
Okay. We, that's a lawsuit threat that you brought to us. So I would move that we do not discuss this. And this isn't a matter for our attorney. You're threatening us with a lawsuit.
I agree. And I think I can prove, I did a FOIA to take a look at Rhine Van Listes files. There is no files. I have a site map from the county clerk that shows that a water tank is not on the official site map.
Okay, well, I guess we'll wait to get the lawsuit. Then we'll defend ourselves. And does anybody else have anything else to say? I mean, you're entitled to take legal action. And we'll believe and defend ourselves. Thank you. Sorry you're having so much trouble.
So just on that, I probably am going to do two small claims court against the village. I will probably have to do an arisement case against the village. John Fenton had two squad, cop squad cars at the library to watch them dig and bring it for sale.
But certainly you're right. If you feel aggrieved, I, you know, I understand that. Sorry you're having so much difficulty.
I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to go to the US Supreme Court. I got the money to be able to do.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm sure you understand.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business?
Do you want me to discuss the park here or you, or the J?
Whoever likes. We didn't have to wait all night. I didn't, I should have taken it sooner. How about now?
Okay, sure.
Because I think we're right between I and J.
So I just wanted to give the town board an update as to where we are with the RFP that went out for bids for the pavilion. And I'm sorry to say that the bids came in high again. The lowest bidder was about a hundred thousand over the dollars that we have in place for the project.
Six twenty-two, it came.
Six twenty-two, yes. And Frank Mazzaro, the architect, has had a number of conversations with the contractors, with suggestions as to how to reduce the cost of the project. I should say that I had a discussion last week with Elizabeth and Alan and gave them an update. And I had a meeting with Warren Merplansky this evening. And what he's recommending is the only thing left at this point is if there's a desire to move ahead on the project is to go after another RFP with some of the recommendations, I know, Elizabeth, with some of the recommendations that have come in to cut costs. I think the first thing I feel I should do is to sit down with the county and to find out, you know, if that money will be in place.
The CDBG.
Yes. So I think that's the one threat that we would have, that we have to be sure that we will be, well, sure that that money would be in place. So I, I would.
That's your, just, because I'll just go over this meeting. The hot, the low bid came in at six hundred twenty-two thousand.
Right. And we'll get a report to the town board so they can see all the numbers. There were, there were two primary contractors and there were about five subcontractors. And.
Frank was able to go through and, and identify change orders that could bring it down forty thousand dollars, I think, which puts the cost at around five hundred eighty-five thousand. We have about five hundred and eight thousand. So that leaves us eighty-two short. Is that right? I'm, I'm just leaving, like, reading my notes.
Okay.
That's, that's pretty close.
Yeah, I thought we had about five-ten.
We have five-ten.
Right, so.
So we're seventy-five thousand dollars still.
Yeah. And Frank has talked to some of the subcontractors and they have discussed places to cut as well. So it was more like fifty thousand that could be cut off.
Warren said we have to go out for another RFP. We can't do change orders on the bid.
Right, yes.
So the RFP that we did this time was forty-five hundred dollars plus, amazingly enough, almost another two thousand in copy changes. So it was sixty-five hundred dollars, sixty.
Well, I think one of the things we have to look at is whether or not we need those copies, whether or not, you know.
Where the co, where's it saying that we have to do copies? Is it in our town bidding, you know, law? Or is it, that's a question I have because we should be sending them out.
And we could give people two dollars.
Andy couldn't tell, Andy couldn't tell me. He's like, well, this is just what we always do. And I'm like, it's not, we can't do that.
Yeah, no, it's crazy at this point, yeah.
We approve forty-five hundred and have it come in two thousand dollars higher.
Right.
I said, you know, we're a municipality. We don't work like that.
And certainly that should not have happened without some discussion, some approval.
Right. So you go to the county and we'll sit on this?
Okay. That's, yeah, we should at least take that step. So to give you some good news, I hope that you each have an opportunity to go down to the park.
I did.
To the piosk. The signage has been installed. There are three large panels, one that has a map of the entire park, another one that has the map of the entire trail system, and a third one that has recognition of the Frost Family Trust, showing our gratitude for the dollars that they contribute to make the trail system possible. And really their commitment to the park project. Not only did they do the trails, but they made a commitment to, for a hundred thousand dollars for the pavilion as well. So they've been very gracious. And I've been waiting to hear back from Chris Chesney about a date or a couple of dates that we could consider for a ribbon cutting and letting know when that happens.
Sally, thank you for your beyond the call of duty commitment to this project.
Well, you're very welcome. As Elaine says, the recreation for our community is something that's needed. It's in everyone's best health to be out there doing things. And I'm just amazed that, because I'm there so often, the number of people, children, that are using the park during the day. You have young kids there with their moms. And weekends, it's just packed. And it's great. The day the signs were being installed, there was a mom and her daughter. And I went over to them. They were on the trail. And I said, hi, I says, you know, how often do you get out here? She said, we are out here every single day. And mother and daughter.
It's a nice place to walk. It is. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for your patience and your support, the town board. You know, it's been challenging, but we've accomplished a lot and they saw a lot more ahead of us.
Not for us, for you. You're doing all the heavy lifting. We're just voting out.
We also need to get some, keep your dog on a leash.
That, yeah, we had a meeting today. Pete Dunn came and saw me. We have, there's a landowner to the south of the park, on Mill Road, who has had dogs coming on his property, scaring deer, running off leash. So Barry's here. Pete asked us, could we have three or four signs made that say something like, dogs must be on leashes at all times, and put them up, one in the parking lot and two or three along the property line where this property owner has posted, no trespassing, you know, no, he hunts there. He was in his bow stand and had, had a dog scare the deer off. So dogs in this town have to be on leashes at all. Barry, is that something you could help us with? Order them? We could pay for it out of the park fund. We come up with, with the wording?
Yeah.
Yep.
And honestly, it's something that's illegal, so.
Dogs must be on.
She'd be fined, fines, or something.
How about dogs, it must be on a leash at all times with town, Rhinebeck, town and Rhinebeck law? Please keep your dog on a leash. I don't know how.
I, I would almost, I think threatening a fine would be really effective. I mean, and people should be fined because they're really, they're not supposed to have a dog's option.
Yeah, the reason, the incident.
If your animals getting into terrible fights, when they're off, I mean, so many bad things can happen.
All right, we'll do some verbiage and email it around.
It's actually against the law to have your dog chase a deer.
In our town dog law?
And, yeah, the incident that happened was there was a dog chasing a deer. The woman who had the dog was told, why isn't your dog on a leash? And she said, I have a leash. It's in my car. So.
So would they get thirty days in our kennel with that?
Now that it's all renovated, that might be, it looks like a vacation to me. Time alone.
Okay, well, thank you. And I'll keep you up to date with my conversations with people.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items or any other new business? You got your truck.
We have a discussion, I am.
Oh, sorry, how did I miss that? Attendance at the 2017 Planning Conference in Saratoga Springs. Is that your agenda item?
Yeah, two members on the liaison to the planning board and the planning board clerk brought to my attention that two members want to go to this conference in Saratoga Springs.
When is it?
It's sometime in 2017, but apparently they want to register now.
Is there money in the budget?
Uh, no, there's not money.
Is there enough money for one person to go?
Pardon me?
Is there enough money for one person to go?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Is this the New York State Planning Federation?
Yeah. When we budget.
This is the annual meeting.
The Planning Federation.
That, when we budget, we budget, you know, put a ton in, but there are free courses or five-dollar courses. There's a, at, at, in Millbrook at the Ag and Markets.
Bottom House Center.
That's always what's driven me in the budget meeting with the chairs in past years. If we don't have it, I, how can we approve it? How much is it?
Uh, I don't know. It is more than what we have.
Well, it's gonna travel and logic.
Do you have a?
Yeah, it's, it's travel and.
Do you have a recommendation for us? Or did you just want us to talk about it? Is this something you want to look at in the budget process?
Handbook thing to say that people have to get approval with the town board for conferences. Traditionally, one person has gone. It's always been the same person. If last year, maybe a different person went. So question is, do we want to send one person or send no people? I don't think we can send two people.
Well, I guess we need to know how much it is and look at how much we have budget. Want to table this? Bring it up at the next meeting. We're at the budget meeting and we can look at it. You want to find out? Okay. Thank you. Anything else for anybody? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining unit stuff and personnel matters specific to a specific person and his or her appointment for hiring. Collective barg, is that close enough, though?
Absolutely.
Collective bargaining for the highway department and the hiring of a specific person. Motion second? On favor, going to executive session. Thanks. We'll be back. Thank you all very much for coming.